I think like we talked about, if you do that, you should look at making two twisters really good. Cause then you would trip a lot of injuries and drop a twister.
Yeah. It's kind of your hard decision actually. Because I really want to do a long twister. You don't see the limit.
Right, you want to do it in one half, right? Yeah, that would be.
But you know, we missed you last week. And why is someone like you working along? I don't think that's gonna happen.
I was gonna say, but that would be very impressive, but yeah, that's. You work, okay. Honestly, you do strength training during the off season because the more you impress the board, the higher you get. You know what I'm saying? So if you keep with some sort of strength training program, you could potentially move the board enough to get that.
Cause I need to run on to, that'll be so fun.
I got hers up there, she didn't.
I know, I saw.
Her first one was flat on her back and like pulled it. But like, didn't hold the right way. Like she pulled it like this. Like, I was scared of right now. But it wasn't like that, it was like a pipe. Cause she piped. It wasn't like she like arched. She like brought her legs up and like landed like this.
All right, good evening, everyone. It is Monday, January 8th, 2024, and it's just after 5:30 PM. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors of the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. Superintendent Wimmer, could you please confirm that this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We recognize a quorum of our board. We have all seven members present. Six members are physically present, and Board Member June Kruger is participating by telephone. Because we have a board member participating by telephone, we'll need to collect all of our votes by roll call. So I will do my best to remember, but I trust that my fellow board members will remind me in case I miss one. That being said, next item on our agenda is to approve this agenda, which was circulated in advance. I move to approve the agenda. Is there a second? Thank you, Kelly. Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Dr. Temez?
Yes.
Mr. Swiger votes yes. And Ms. Kruger?
Yes.
And Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Ms. Ergot?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
And Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Uh, we now move to recognition, and we have a recognition for girls diving. And I believe that Molly Hanks is going to introduce. Hello, Molly. There you are.
Hi.
Good evening.
Normally Erin Fabler handles our co-ops, but she is out ill today, so I have the pleasure of introducing um, our head coach for our girls swim and dive, or swim, dive, is Alex Kane. Um, and Dave Blumier is also here, who is our head girls coach. So I'm gonna call both of them up as they can tell you about some very exciting fall that two of our divers had this, this fall and earned some really cool accomplishments by qualifying for the state tournament. So come on up, Alex, Coach Blumier, and you can.
Okay. Um, I'm David Blumier. I am the head swimming coach, and uh, these two young ladies had an outstanding seizing, season. Uh, one of the things I'm very proud of, they not only dive, but they help us out in swimming. And we've been second in the conference. These two ladies uh, went one, two in diving, also swam, and they did outstanding job. And of course, um, Alex is gonna tell you some great stories about state. So, there you go, Alex. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, all right, so um, as you guys know, uh, these are the two divers that we have this year. This is probably one of the best years that we've had in diving in quite some time. I mean, I've been coaching for about four or five years maybe, and um, having two girls go to state is something that we've never done before. So the fact that we did it this year is pretty amazing. Uh, as you, as I just said, they both went to state. Uh, leading up to that, they basically had probably the best seasons of their lives so far. Um, they're, I feel honored to not only have um, talented athletes, but also hardworking athletes, all right? Um, as a coach, that, that's something that you're always striving for. Um, and so I, they're both talented and hardworking, so it led to a very productive season for them. Um, Madison actually ended up breaking the pool record on numerous uh, numerous meets. Uh, probably about three or four times, I think she broke the pool record. Um, her best six dive meet was uh, 279, which is pretty close to like 50 points a dive, which is amazing. Um, and her best uh, 11 dive was 480, right?
40.
480, yeah, 485, um, which is also phenomenal. Um, both of them, as, as you know, made it to state, and um, they did absolutely phenomenal. Madison actually finished on the podium. Um. Okay, sorry. She finished in fifth place. Um, but uh, yeah, they both had a phenomenal season, so. I don't know what else to say, um, other than they're talented and um, skilled and hardworking. So I'm looking forward to another year, because we actually have another year with them. So they're gonna continue to do amazing things next year. So. Just be ready to see us back next year, so, all three of us.
Well, to our coaches and our student athletes, thanks for coming. We always love hearing what's going on in the uh, in the district, and congratulations on your accomplishments. We have our student representatives up next, and just for the folks who came in for the um, for this, for the other presentation. Uh, we know that it's a school night, or actually, it's probably an inclement weather night.
It is.
But we know you're.
They still wanna study, I'm sure.
Absolutely. So we're not offended if you need, if you need to leave, but we always invite folks to stay. It's a public meeting, so we're not, we're not offended. But that being said, we are gonna invite forward our student representatives, and we have Amaya Turner and Noah Minty, and it's like, Amaya's going first. And Amaya, you are a junior at East, is that right?
Yeah.
Fantastic. All right, tell us what's going on.
Okay, so I'll be giving you guys information about our student life and athletics, so. To start, students are back from break, ready to learn and preparing for the upcoming exam week. There's only one week left in the semester, and exams are quickly approaching, and the students have various opportunities such as our crew coffee house to participate in group studying with their peers. On Wednesday, January 24th, at 6:00 PM, eighth grade students and their parents and guardians are invited to the gearing up for high school event at, in the East and West High Schools auditorium. The high school counselors and administrators will present more details on registering for classes, being successful in high school, and club curricular activities. Our school, um, West Bend Coffee House, sales have been down, and we would like to remind and encourage people to purchase the delicious blend on Monday and Friday mornings from 6:45 to 7:00 AM. For athletics, the East and West Boys Basketball Game occurred on January 5th, with the winners being our West Bend, West Spartans winning at all three levels. And the Mary Solas are pursuing the 2024 Olympics. West High School senior Connor Mary Sola has qualified for the 2024 US Olympic Team Trials in Wrestling, taking place in April at Penn State University. If he qualifies at that time, he will represent the United States at the Olympic Games in Paris in August of 2024. His twin brother Cole Mary Sola will compete this spring for a chance to become eligible for the Olympic Wrestling Trials. The Ice Bears Boys Co-op Hockey Team ha- held their Military Appreciation Night on December 16th. They raised a total of $5,300, which have been donated to the local VFW and to the US Hockey Player Support, our troop organization. The Ice Bears are made up of students from both East and West, Hartford, Kewaskom, Grafton, Germantown, Port Washington, Living Word, Anslinger, with the head coach being Mike Driscoll, a teacher at East High School.
Thank you. We invite Noah Minty forward as well. Well, you are a junior at West, correct?
That is correct.
Fantastic. Please tell us what's going on.
All right. Well, for clubs and co-curriculars, West Bend High School Student Council is planning to do a charity court during our school's charity week for the dance on Saturday, uh, February 17th. So students will be nominated by teachers and then entered into a general vote for students. On the weekend of December 16th and 17th, the pep band Brass Wind and Fire played at the Herd Game in Oshkosh. That's the Milwaukee Bucks G League affiliate team. Uh, the kids played a pre-game warm-up, the National Anthem, and at halftime. Uh, back in early November, East NHS members began a penny drive, and the numbers are in. In total, they raised $1,013 for the Children's Wisconsin Foundation. Uh, in Youth Impact Club, four more students were trained in QPR, which is a lifesaving method for suicide prevention. We now have 27 members in total who have completed training this year. And then finally, the West Bend Debate Team is soon to host state this very weekend, so wish us luck there. And that's all that we really have for clubs and co-curriculars.
Thank you. We appreciate both of you coming tonight. Like I said before, you know, it's a school night or an inclement weather night. Feel free to stay, but um, thank you again for keeping us connected. Appreciate it very much. All right, uh, we will move then to our next agenda item, which is public participation, and I have one comment card tonight. So I'm gonna invite forward Leanna Dronzo, and I apologize if I've not pronounced your name correctly. Now, Board Policy 187 requires that I give it a little announcement, so I'll do that, all right? We've come to the public participation portion of our agenda. Board Policy 187 prescribes a nature and procedures for this segment. I summarize the policy at this time. The copies of the policy are available in the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the board should obtain and complete a participant comment card near the entry and turn it over to the president prior to the meeting or when allowed by the president. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and given three minutes to speak. The participant must state his or her name and relation to the district. This information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. The board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The board may refer the matter to the superintendent, a committee, or take the remarks into consideration in future action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints, and Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The board recommends use of these procedures as a guarantee of fair and timely response. Uh, there's a visible timer uh, right behind me to help manage your, your time, which is three minutes. And um, we want to be sure that you are heard and that the meeting runs efficiently, so we'd ask for those in the audience to please refrain from conversation, comment, or applause during or after the public participation comments. So with that introduction, um, Mr. Dronzo, it says you are a resident of the district. Is that correct?
Correct.
Excellent. So for the record, if you could just state your name, and then the next three minutes are yours.
Absolutely. My name is Leanna Dronzo, and I'm a Jackson homeowner. I'm here to address the severe lack of safety and security in our district. For members new to the board this year, I'd like to refresh your memory of last year's annual meeting. Citizens were vocal in their proposal to allocate funds for more security. It was shot down by the board. I'll take you back to the year before, his first week of school, when global studies saturated our children with BLM and George Floyd propaganda, which ended in a riot. Teachers had to form a wall between the children, and other students were called traitors and physically attacked for choosing not to participate in this riot. The school lied to parents and reported a silent protest took place, until video was leaked of the screaming and violent rioters. Equity, white privilege, training sessions, and CRT-related resources were passed around between teachers that summer. Then school began, and a racially charged riot became the fruit of that mindset. Skip along with me to December at the High Schools in Badger. In just one week, there were three horrific attacks on different students. Thankfully, all three were caught on camera, lest the superintendent decided to lie again to parents to downplay the threat level and lessen the severity. One video shows six students brutally attack another who is lame-prone and helpless on the ground. His head is repeatedly kicked and stomped on in this mob attack. That isn't a schoolyard fight. It's attempted murder. Next, we had a video of two females. A male steps into frame and without provocation viciously punches the female in the face, knocking her back into the lockers where she sinks to the floor. And as far as our zero tolerance policy goes, does somebody want to address why this child was seen in school the very next morning? WBSD is clearly not safe. If we cannot do the bare bones basics of protecting our students, why would any parents send their kids here? My biggest concern is that these attacks appear to be hate crimes, because every single incident, without exception, involves black kids attacking white kids. When students are not treated equal, and one group is held to a different level of accountability than the other, when we fail to discipline certain students over others because of toxic equity practices, all that is learned is that one group can get away with these crimes. These attacks need investigated as hate crimes, as every child involved needs expelled. We need a tough-on-violence policy to protect our children. I know the neoliberal stance this district has taken is why the violence has escalated. These kids are being taught division based upon race. We need more security officers, as was asked repeatedly last year and denied. Board, you are ultimately responsible for these kids' safety. If something does not change, expect them to escalate in both severity and frequency. That will fall on you and your conscience. You're in a position right now to change this scenario before someone, God forbid, is beaten to death in the WBSD.
Thank you for your comments. That was our only public participation comment card, so we'll close out that agenda item, and we'll move to the next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. On our consent agenda, we have minutes of the December 5, 2023 regular board meeting. There are two contracts for approval, one resignation, three retirements, disbursements posted through January 5, 2024, and revenues and expenditures in the aggregate through November 30th of 2023. I would move to approve the consent agenda. Would there be a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melanie. We have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
And Ms. Kruger?
Yes.
Ms. Ergot?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
And Mr. Swiger votes yes, and Dr. Temez?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That motion carries. All right, next we have, let's fast forward here, we have our discussion items, and we have several meaty financial topics to discuss. Uh, first, we have financial planning, past, present, and future. And Superintendent Wimmer, I'm not sure if you're going to be kicking this off?
I, I can introduce, he's no stranger to you, Brian Brewer, uh, from RW Baird, who serves as a financial advisor to the district. He um, has continued to present, uh, to keep the board updated through either presentations or work sessions on financial position, and is here to do so tonight as well. So I'll turn that over to Brian. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Good to see the board again. Um, the last time I was presenting in front of the board was in August of '22. Um, early stages of uh, long-term capital planning and talking about some financial concepts. Um, as you, you know, I know you heard from EUA, Epstein UN Architects in December, and two weeks from now, you'll hear from Fendorf, uh, related to the facilities assessment that they're conducting. Um, so we thought tonight, in between those two, talking about some of your options for funding long-term capital, and what, and kind of a refresher on what the district has done to uh, pay down prior uh, long-term capital investments would, would be appropriate as you um, continue your, your long-range planning process.
And Reverend Brewer, I had a chance to take a look at these in advance. These are fantastic slides. Lots of information. Just to set ground rules, I may ask questions as you go along. That's okay, correct?
Yes, please do. Uh, and I may also just reference certain materials because of the amount of information that's here. And, you know, I will likely be back at pre, uh, subsequent meetings in the spring, and we can refresh and update and ask, ask further questions beyond tonight as well.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. So um, the updated process is in 2023. As I mentioned, you have some meetings on your agenda over this sixty-day period here. Um, ultimately, it's part of a, a progression pyramid that you'll see throughout some of the documents. I believe you initially saw this last month. Um, uh, we're in the facilities assessment stage. Uh, Fendorf will present to you a scope of, of work uh, over the next fifteen years um, to evaluate and prioritize, and, and then ultimately arrive at, you know, what, if anything, does the board want to address, and then if so, how, right? So that's kind of the filtering down of um, the assessment to action. So within that, uh, I wanted to uh, refresh some of the concepts we talked about in August of '22. Um, you know, bucketing projects, right? So there are certain projects that we'll refer to as maintenance projects, that they're, they're smaller in, in scope. Uh, they're often able to be addressed by district staff. Uh, they're generally annual um, upkeep, and it's a pro- a program. Um, and, and most often, those are paid for within the operational budget. So the, the board, over the years, has uh, prioritized a, a maintenance line item and defended it despite um, um, limited growth in the re- operational funding within the revenue limit formulas. So one bucket is maintenance projects, and the other bucket is capital improvement projects. So think of these as larger-scale projects, uh, longer-term investments. Um, generally, you're hiring outside vendors to, to uh, perform the, the work. Um, and, you know, some examples are HVAC improvements, um, roofing, and then changes to the building, whether it's remodeling within the buildings or even changing the, the footprint of the building with, via an addition or a replacement. So maintenance projects and capital improvement projects. So the primary sources of funding within Wisconsin school uh, law is either your operational budget or a borrow, a borrowing authority. So first example is the operational budget. This is, this is the, often referred to globally as your general fund or Fund 10, and this is what is governed year in and year out by the revenue limit calculation. So you're probably very familiar with how that works over the years. Um, but um, some of the funds within that general fund are Fund 10. Um, budget capacity within Fund 10 has, has, has been constrained as the per pupil funding um, uh, has been relatively flat in recent years, up until this budget. Um, and overlay that with uh, enrollment trends, because it's a per pupil amount multiplied by your three-year average enrollment. Um, so, so generally, the Fund 10 can cover smaller capital projects, such as the maintenance project budget. Um, but in order to save up enough to pay for long-term, uh, generally, there's not enough in uh, the operational budget to do that for the scope of work to be done. Some of the ways that the district has done, has set dollars aside is, this district has utilized a capital expansions fund, which is Fund 41. Those dollars are budgeted and compete with the Fund 10 dollars. So because prior boards have, you know, said, we need a line item in here, even if it's not enough, we need to be able to chip away at some of the annual maintenance costs. Um, there was a, a budget commitment that was um, you know, it, along with a strategy of growing that budget commitment by 4% each year. So that allows, I'll tell you the amount here in a minute, but that resulted in you having a portion of your general fund that is committed for those annual projects. Um, Long-Term Capital Improvement Trust, we'll discuss that in a little bit, but it's, it's, the, the term that we use is Fund 46. These are dollars, this is a location where, at the end of a year, if you have a, a positive budget to actual, and there's some savings within the budget, you could set dollars aside by board action into this trust account for future capital. So it's a way to save towards a larger-scale project. Um, and then the, the final uh, item within operational funds is a committed fund balance. And this district has two of those by prior board action. One was the Long-Term uh, Jackson Improvement Fund, and then uh, the other was the sale, sale proceeds from the sale of Barton uh, facility. So that's operational funds. Um, the other mechanism that school districts can use is, is to borrow funds, and ultimately comes down to, how does the school board um, authorize or receive authority to borrow? So one, one method is within that revenue limit, so competing again with Fund 10, Fund 41, Fund 46. Um, it's Fund 38, and so the board-by-board action can borrow. Generally, it's for a smaller uh, amount of scope, uh, and useful life of the investments are generally shorter. Um, so you can borrow and make the payments within the, the limited dollars from the revenue limit. So the question that the board and the planning process has is what is the budget impact? Um, you know, of, of that new payment? The other option is seeking voter approval at a referendum outside of the operational budget. So when you're looking at that uh, version of authority to borrow, you're, the key question is what is the tax impact of that new principal and interest payment to be repaid over a period of time? Um, so ultimately, the considerations when you're trying to figure out which, which version of that to use is uh, how much funding is needed for the projects, and, and how, how long is the useful life of the investment, right? If it's gonna be a new facility, or it's gonna be an addition that'll be on the building for fifty, sixty, seventy years, generally speaking, that's gonna be, need, need to be addressed outside of the revenue limit. If it's um, you know, smaller repairs, some physical upgrades, some smaller remodel, light remodeling, those items could potentially be addressed with a, a loan within the operational budget. So, uh, just recapping some board achievements within those two funding sources within school law. Um, this, 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 this board and previous boards uh, have been able to successfully balance the operational budget despite being limited to what is termed the low revenue ceiling. So it's the, it's the, the minimum amount that a district can levy per pupil within the revenue limit formula. And the reason you're at the low revenue ceiling is that you've, historically, since the beginning of revenue limits, which was in the early 1990s, you've, you started as a low-spending district, conservatively budgeting, only expending what you needed. But when the formula was created, it froze that low-spending level, and then it has grown and changed year over year for thirty years um, to where you are today. So while actively managing within that low revenue ceiling, you've also managed to provide a high-quality education, um, and keeping the school's tax rates at among the lowest in the state. So with, while, with, while doing that, you've also addressed ongoing maintenance costs within that line item that I referenced. Um, that is, was protected within the budget. It's currently being budgeted and levied in Fund 41. The amount in this year's budget is a million eight, and that started a number of years ago, uh, closer to one million, with a growth of 4%. So um, the, the fact the board has a million eight in the budget was because of the foresight of previous boards. Um, Fund 41, you know, you, you may not need it every single year, depending on your capital projects budget each year. Um, so Fund 41 Reserve was built up to 2.8 million. Um, but those, that, those funds have been utilized for some larger scope projects in the last three years. So currently, your reserve in Fund 41 is zero, so it's really just that million eight of the line item in the budget. Fund 38, which is that borrowing and, you know, repayment within the budget, um, that had been a ru- a. Fund 38, which is that borrowing and repayment within the budget, that had been a approximate budget of about $1 million. Currently, because you've paid off all of that debt within the budget, that levy and reserve in Fund 38 is zero. So because you're debt-free within the budget, those dollars are down to zero. By doing this and chipping away what you can within these budgeted line items, it helps you to minimize what needs to be asked for outside of the revenue limit via a public referendum. So I referenced Fund 46 earlier, but what I didn't reference was that this school district and this board is the creator of the legislation. So a previous school board lobbied for, worked with DPI to construct the ability for school districts statewide to utilize this Fund 46 transfer, this trust account, in order to allow boards to make a decision at the end of a fiscal year to transfer dollars to begin saving up and receive state equalization aid, which helps to minimize next year's tax impact. So not only have you been using it, this district, West Bend Joint School District, created it as well for the benefit of other districts statewide. So as I mentioned, it's a transfer, so there's no real set number to be transferred in. Currently, from prior board actions, the reserve balance is $3.8 million. So those dollars are sitting there and can be used to offset, you know, a scope of work up to $3.8 million with funds on hand, okay? So think of it as a way of saving within the budget, okay? As I mentioned, the previous boards have also committed reserves. So Jackson and School Improvement Plan has $1,005,000, held as a committed reserve in Fund 10. And then the Barton Elementary Sale Proceeds was $540,000. Those are still available in a Fund 49. So all told, you have about, you know, 5.8, let's call it 6 million-ish, of funds that have been saved up to help offset some of the scope of work that you'll hear about in the coming weeks and months, okay?
So just to kind of recap this, just so I understand this, kind of rewinding a little bit, we talk about Fund 10. That's our annual budget. We could, in theory, use that for building, but if we do, that takes money away from things like books, and that's capped by the revenue limit. Because I think there are some folks who have asked, "Well, if you just need more money for a school, just tax a little bit more." And the answer is, "Well, there's a limit." So do I have that right so far?
Correct. State law limits the amount of revenue to be raised. Anything over that, you need voter support.
There are these other funds, though, where we can kind of stash away money for legitimate purposes. And there's a little bit in Fund 10, et cetera, you just talked about, so there's 6 million saved up there, so to speak.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to be sure. And that last fund that we talked about, let's see, I think it's Fund 46. Because if we carry too much cash, that can kind of penalize us, canted, and the revenue and the whole calculation of how much state aid we get. But by putting it in that fund that shields us from that penalty, is that correct?
That's exactly correct. So before you had Fund 46 as an option, that those funds would have built up in Fund 10 as a general fund, fund balance. If that happens, you aren't quote-unquote "spending" it into anything. So you don't, the only way you get state aid back to help offset local taxes is by reimbursement of an expenditure. So the trick to Fund 46 is it's treated as a separate trust account. And so by spending it from 10 into that savings vehicle, it counts for a reimbursement in state aid. So that was kind of the difference, or the thing that that solved, that it was a solution to that problem, that I don't really want to save it in Fund 10 if I'm not going to get the aid benefit from it in the subsequent fiscal year.
Thank you.
So transitioning into the larger-scale capital improvement projects summary in recent history. So this is the last four referendums, going back to '09. In '09, there were two questions, one passed and one failed. The one that was approved was for $27,400,000. And the primary project it was funding is the upgrades and improvements at Badger. The question that failed in '09 was primarily focused on Jackson, constructing a new Jackson elementary facility site, and then some projects at some of the elementary buildings. Then in 2012, voters approved improvements at primarily Silverbrook, some smaller projects at Green Tree, but the primary project was renovations and remodeling and upgrades at Silverbrook. And then most recently, in 2019, there was a question that failed, primarily focused on Jackson, and then some safety and security items at various facilities, including the high school. So I only bring this up because I'm about to tell you how this board and previous boards have managed that authority to borrow, pay for projects, and then pay down the debt. But any questions on just this recap of prior referendum questions? So another board achievement is that you receive voter approval in '09 and '12. School districts for long-term capital have the ability to borrow and repay up to 20 years from the time that you borrow to pay the project costs. From day one, those boards and continued boards until today have been actively managing, the strategy has been to, when the opportunity presents itself, refinance that debt, borrow it at lower or subsidized costs, and then levy to pay down the debt where it fits within the overall budget and levy and mill rate. And so at this point, as of today, all of the district's debt that was authorized by the '09 and the '12 has now fully been provided for. So there is zero levy in the '23-'24 budget to pay debt, because it's all been provided for. So why is that important? It helps to minimize interest costs. It helps to pay down principal and reduce your tax levy. And it positions you for what is the next investment? What is the discussion around the next investment, right? So the bottom of this page shows that that strategy resulted in a payoff of 14 years and 11 years from the time that it was authorized back in 2009 and 2012, respectively. Meanwhile, the district has maintained a strong credit rating. Current credit rating for long-term borrowing is AA-, AAA is the highest, AA, single A, and then triple B. So similar to our own personal credit scores, the higher that can be, the lower the borrowing cost from lenders is for future loans. So this, while implementing this strategy and levying for debt payments and maintaining the total school mill rate at a level among the lowest in the state, this happened because of continued low-spending levels in the operational budget, as well as strong growth in the property values that comprise, in the communities that comprise the West Bend Joint School District. Just a couple of statistics just for awareness. In the past five years, the growth in the property value within the communities has been $2.7 billion, or 56% growth in, over those five years. So currently, all of the property value within the communities served by the district is $7.6 billion. The total levy reduction because of that debt prepayment and paydown has been a $7.7 million reduction in the last two years. So by lowering the levy, because you're lowering that debt repayment and paying off the debt, you were able to lower your levy mill rate in '22-'23 to $5.20. So to put that in perspective, statewide, K through 12, when you look at K through 12 districts, the average mill rate is $7.22. So you're currently $2, $2 full dollars lower than the average across the state. And you've accomplished those previous projects and paid down that debt, you know, at the same time. So as I referenced, this last bullet shows that the levy in referendum-approved debt payments is zero in '23-'24.
Just one comment on that. So the mill rate for a homeowner or a business owner owning a building that pays the mill rate, $2 lower than the state average. If you just take a $300,000 house, doing my math, $2 lower is that $600, 200 per each $100,000, and 600, I'm doing my math, and I had finance.
Yeah, very accurately.
So if you live in West Bend, and that's the average, there are some people I know from my community, or it's Greendale, and they're over nine. So it's like $4 more. So people in other communities are paying a lot more in taxes, and that's real dollars. And you talk about probably for an average home, between $600 and $1,000, just for average home in today's value. So I just want to point that out. I know there's some financial challenges, but those are the facts. Those are the numbers. And again, prior boards and our board have been very conscious of paying off the debt to actually have that go down that far. But now we're in a challenging situation, right? Where now we have some failing buildings in areas of our district that we got to approve, and security, and other things. So I will stop my, but I just wanted to do some real math, so for people listening.
Yeah.
But to that point, the property values were reassessed at almost a 30% increase. So the values got assessed, even though our mill rate went down, we're still not quite as much as savings as, you know, per homeowner or business owner that, you know, that would lead you to believe. So let's not steer a false narrative to where we're, you know, we are saving money, yes, but it's, you know, with the assessed values and higher rates at that, the savings isn't as much as you would think.
Yeah, and I think it's, and that's why I appreciate you have various slides coming up that measure this from different dimensions, because I think, you know, these two members make good points. Because if you're looking at it by person, by citizen, that's one. If you look at it by property value, which is kind of the wherewithal, in theory, to pay for it, it's gone down. And so I look forward to the slides you have upcoming, which kind of talk about this from various dimensions.
Yes, and all those points are good. The statewide average growth this past year, property values, was just shy of 13, and the year prior, it was 14. So while the communities that you're referencing here might be growing faster than that, it's been pretty fast across the state these last couple of years as well. And so this visual just shows the increased commitment to paying down debt while maintaining the mill rate. And then as the levy on the top dropped, that $7.7 million, that's how you're stepping down to the $5.20. So it's part of the growth in the property value, but it's also the, you know, needing to levy less because you don't have any debt commitments to levy for anymore. So it's a good position to be in, to have the conversation you're embarking on about what of our long-range, or our facilities need to be addressed long-term. So as was mentioned, I also pulled together some comparable, I won't spend a lot of time, but I do want to just orient you to what's in this, so you can reference it later. Over the years, we've used statewide demographic comparables, so districts that have similar size and enrollment bases across the state. And then we have a separate slice of comparables in the region. But they, for various reasons, they may not be as comparable other than they are nearby, right? So we have it broken down by these two different groupings. And so we've included a mill rate comparison. So this is the statewide comparison. You see the dotted line running across, that's the K-12 average at the $7.22. And you see West Bend at $5.20, Beloit is at $3.96. And then all of the other statewide comparables are higher from a mill rate standpoint, which is, back to Mr. Reppholz's point, mill rate, for those viewing, it's a rate per thousand of property value. So for every $1,000 property value you have, $5.20 is the school portion of that. And for every $100,000, it's $520. So this next sheet shows the debt outstanding net of any reserves to pay down, to pay off the debt. So currently, view this one as a snapshot in time, because just because Beloit, La Crosse, and West Bend currently don't have debt outstanding, it doesn't mean there's need, there aren't needs, right? And just because Nina and Verona in Oak Creek have the higher levels of debt outstanding, that just means that they're, in their continuum of their history, they're, more recently, they've addressed some of their long-term needs and incurred that debt to pay for it. The other thing that this sheet alone doesn't tell you is, on how many students does it serve, or what is the property value base that is supporting the debt repayment? And so the next couple of slides show you from a student count perspective. And the student count we're using here is the revenue limit count, so it's a three-year rolling average, which gives you kind of a blended view of students over three years. So West Bend's in the middle of this comparable group at about $5,900. So the next slide shows the debt outstanding per student count. So it gives you kind of like, almost like a per capita debt outstanding. The next view is total property value, not including tax increment districts. And so as I mentioned earlier, West Bend is $7.6 billion. Elm Brook is the highest on this list at $11.4 billion. So then if you do it as a percent of the property value, that's what this next page does for you. And then those same slides are repeated for the regional area school districts. So West Bend's mill rate is the lowest among the regional districts. West Bend's the only one that has all of its debt provided for at this stage, at this moment in time. Largest student count in the area. Also the largest property value base that the communities comprise of the school district. So any high-level questions on that? If not, I'll just transition back to the other document.
One I appreciate is, kind of back to the earlier conversation, there are different ways to look at this, because it's tough to look at one school district and another school district and say, "Well, they've got 50 million of debt, and another district's got 20 million of debt," without knowing, "How big are they?" So that's why I appreciate some of the dimensions you have and things like, "Well, what about student count?" Because in theory, if you had a school with triple the number of students, in theory, they have to provide for more buildings than someone who's got only 1/3 of the students. And so I just say, this is good information for us to have going forward. I'm not sure we draw any immediate conclusions around it, but that's why I appreciate, that's what I was talking about before, about these various dimensions or slices or different ways to look at it.
Yeah, and this is really just understand, a way to understand where you currently stand, right? Relative to where those districts currently stand. The other piece of that is what is left on the to-do list, too. You know, it's one thing if you have the most debt outstanding, but if you, you're still not finished, you know, addressing your long-term needs, and that's another side of it, right? So there's a number of ways to evaluate this information, and this is really just, you know, a reference point for you as you move through the year. So the next few pages are example illustrations as you begin to hear scope of work. And I wanted to put together some hypothetical illustrations of how much new funding paid back over using borrowing outside of the revenue limit, how much that would have on a tax impact, right? So principal and interest repayment over time. And so some of the assumptions that are used in here is the AA credit rating of the school district. Just from a reference and awareness, the legal debt capacity, statutory debt capacity for a K through 12 school district is 10% of your property value. Of your property value, including tax increment districts. So for for West Bend, that is just shy of eight point two billion dollars. So ten percent of that is eight hundred and twenty million of capacity. I highly recommend you don't start your plan with that that limit, but I want you to know what the limit is. Because that is, when you get into the process and you talk about different borrowing amounts. You know, making it relative to what the capacity is helps because. The needs of your million plus square foot feet of facility versus our own home budgets, you know, it's it's night and day. They're not really comparable. So I'm using a planning interest rate for the borrowing over a twenty year period of a five and a half percent. Primarily, I'm trying to be conservative because I don't know when or if you would access the market to borrow these funds. If you were in the market today, because of what interest rates have done recently, you could lock in Wisconsin School double A rated. Twenty year financings are hovering around low fours right now. So four percent range for a twenty year financing. So. The illustrations I'm showing have about a point and a half, point and a quarter to a point and a half cushion in the planning.
Do the rates decrease for a lower term?
They can. Right now they don't, but they can. It depends on what's happening with the short rates and the long rates. We're in a weird time where the shorter rates are actually higher than the longer rates. Like, for instance, the. The one year treasury is a five something, let's call it a five thirty, and the ten year treasury is like a three ninety. The thirty year is like a four, you know, so it's so but short, short answer, there when it's normal, there is a benefit of paying it off quicker. Or borrowing it shorter. So I'm using a property value growth of two percent. As we've talked about, the growth has been faster. I just expect after a couple of years of double digit growth statewide, we have to slow down like it. The fair market values can't keep growing at double digits. So. I'm using a two percent as a as a planning item. And so the operational budget is not capable of supporting larger capital improvement. Program projects, right? So you've saved up what you can. You have about six million in different pockets within the budget. You have that million eight that's paying for a portion of the ongoing maintenance projects budget. But the reality is the only mechanism to get that seven point seven million that you reduced in the levy is to ask for it again. So you need you need to ask voters to be able to recoup that seven point seven million and use it towards the next. You know, projects and debt payment related to those projects. So within that, you know, thinking of how successful prior boards have been with establishing a strategy to manage a program like the maintenance program. One concept for for you to consider in the coming months is a board funding strategy where you tell us, look. I get that we have this scope of work and I get that it's going to be multi year and it's going to be an ongoing process that'll, you know, live on beyond this board, right? But let's establish a mill rate target for capital improvement, the capital improvement program. So the the example that I've prepared for you is is let's say we use a dollar twenty-five. Of, you know, per thousand, so the mill rate of a dollar twenty-five towards principal and interest payments of the capital improvement program. So why a dollar twenty-five? I'll get to that in a second. This is the interest rate change. And this this bottom chart is the last thirty years of interest rates. The the upper right chart is this year. What's amazing to me is that from July to late October. Rates went up, you know, basically did nothing but go up. And this is longer term rates, back to your question earlier, John. But then the last forty-five days to sixty days, rates have come back down. So to the point where they we ended the year at about where we started the year of twenty-three. And a lot of that has to do with inflation pressures. So the more it was viewed that the Federal Reserve has inflation under control. The more long term investors were willing to take a lower rate of return. Because inflation, when you when they lend the money to the district, they lock in a rate. And if inflation is going to be. Five, six, seven percent, they're locking in a loss if they lend it to you at four and five percent. But if it's going to be two and three percent, they can lend it to you at four and five percent because they're actually going to get a real return. So that's why this matters. The other key awareness is that we've seen in the financial press, you know, our mortgage rates are higher, our car loans are higher, you know, commercial loans are higher. But. School districts that have strong credit ratings are still borrowing at levels that are. You know, actually, what's interesting is that if you follow that dotted line across, it's around where it was in twenty twelve. When you borrowed for that referendum. So kind of post great recession levels. Not as low as pandemic levels. So it's higher than pandemic levels, but it's still historically speaking, very, very favorable. Financing environment. So I'm now noticing this is hard to see on the screen, but. This is what the mill rate for the capital improvement program debt repayment was over the last couple of years. So it was a dollar forty-eight. Then it dropped to eighty-nine cents and then this year is zero. So I put that there to to show why I picked a dollar twenty-five as the starting point of the discussion. So dollar twenty-five is roughly in the middle of that dollar forty-eight and the eighty-nine cents. So as a guidepost, it. You know, you, the board will tell us this is what I want it to be, but this is conceptually, you know, if you tell me, let's target it to a dollar twenty-five. We would then implement the debt repayment against that and see how much scope of work can get completed. So this first illustration is a hypothetical fifty million repaid over twenty years. And so the impact, we're using forty-nine cents of that dollar twenty-five. Okay, so fifty million equates to forty-nine cents or forty-nine dollars per hundred thousand. Then I said, well, what does it take to get back to the eighty-nine cents? Like, how much more could could we fund of the capital improvements program? So you could get another thirty-five million. So you have a total of eighty-five million that gets you to eighty-nine cents. Then I said, well, what is a hundred million? And that uses up a dollar six out of the targeted dollar twenty-five. Okay? So the this illustration is what if you go and borrow in twenty twenty-four late, you know, go to November referendum. Receive approval and you finance twenty year payments for fifty million, eighty-five million or a hundred million. That's what the dollar six max impact out of the dollar twenty-five is. The other way I looked at it was, you know, what if we phase it in? You know, what if we either phase referendums? Or we ask for an amount and communicate that we'll implement it as we can over the next five years. So this illustration is borrowing thirty-five million. Right away, you'll see the two, the two blue, first two blue bars are they're targeting a dollar six. So basically, I'm saying. Let's pay off as much principal as we can as quickly as we can up to a dollar six. Giving us room for the next phase, which is fifty million. Again, paying off additional principal in year one and year two of that loan. Which creates room for the final phase, which is another fifty million, where we can keep it at a dollar six. So the difference between phasing it like this and and versus my initial example where we borrow it all at one time is it. For a dollar six impact, that borrowing at one time is a hundred million. Phasing it in over a four to five year period is a hundred and thirty-five million. And you're still targeting that dollar six. So you still have capacity within the board strategy of, you know, using a dollar twenty-five towards the capital improvement program. That conceptually, I mean, I tried to make it, you know, base assumptions because again, we don't know what the scope of the assessment is. But I wanted to give you a framework of how to receive that information and what it could translate into in two different ways.
So just to make sure that I'm thinking about it correctly here. So for a dollar six increase in the mill rate. We could potentially have phased in over four years, potentially borrow up to a hundred and thirty-five million dollars by increasing the mill rate a dollar six. Which would still put our mill rate, one of the lowest currently out there. And the ten year average for a mill rate is seven point six seven dollars. So it still keeps us. Eighteen percent below our average, ten year average mill rate. Is that correct? That's the numbers you're.
Correct. You're understanding what I'm doing here. So the dollar six, we're using a dollar six. Of the of the mill rate to fund anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and thirty-five million of capacity of projects over the next few years, right?
What what's the, I guess, what's the benefit of of adding it to to pay off debt instead of just adding it to save it? And pay off the stuff on our own. Why can't we just pay this stuff in cash if we have the extra room in the mill rate? You know, why can't we save it? How long would that take? I mean, because it looked like if we did, if you went off of your. This thirty-five million dollar one, we can pay quite a bit of that down in just a couple of years.
Yeah, like this one, that that version, is that what you're saying? The short answer is you can't. State law doesn't allow you to do that. So you would need some additional.
State law doesn't allow us to be fiscally responsible with money and it wants us to go into debt. That's kind of backwards.
Well, and hang on, let me rephrase a little bit. You need voter approval to do either one of those things. You could go to ask for an operational question to levy the dollar, an additional dollar six and. Make a payment towards debt or or save it for a few years and pay towards a project. But within the revenue limit, you don't have capacity to do that. So it's either you ask for it for an operational levy or you ask for it as a ability to repay the debt. The operation, the one last thing I'd like you to consider is that when you hear Fendorf talk about this, the assessment. And the inflation factor that they use in future years, they're basing it on a long term inflation trend. And I think it's going to be five percent. So even if you try to save up annually. You're versus borrowing and locking in the cost today, avoiding the five percent inflation and then paying it off at four percent. Even if you pay it off at five percent, you're still going to be better off. You're not going to catch up. Sorry, you're not going to catch up in that savings process if you try to do it annually. You follow me? Like the inflation outpaces.
The only way that makes us financially more responsible is if we didn't have to increase the mill rate and we could save for it. So if we had capacity to save currently without increasing the mill rate and then pay for a building ten years from now without having to borrow that. That would be, I think, what you're talking about, John, where it's like, hey, we're, we can save for this. But in any scenario, raising the mill rate would have to be done.
I don't disagree. There's probably a scenario where we're going to have to do something like that if we do want to upgrade schools, but we don't, you know, as a as a board and as a community right now, we have no idea what. The assessment is going to be, where we need to cut back on on buildings because we have too much capacity and we don't need it. Or what school does or what buildings might have to be closed and we can save on that aspect. So, you know. We might have an increase in revenue very fast according to their, you know, according to their assessment on just how to downsize the district because. We're we're under capacity for what we need. You know what I'm saying?
Sure, absolutely.
But there's, there's, there's too many factors right now to say, you know, I'm all on board for any of these. Obviously, I don't think that's the.
And I'm not asking, I'm just trying to give you.
This is just trying to figure out what our budget could be, like how much it would cost. Because the, I think this is, I think it's incredibly informative because. You know, when you talk about a dollar amount, you know, in a, in a, I mean, even just using the the fifty million or a hundred, whether it's fifty or a hundred and thirty-five million. I mean, these are numbers that scare voters, rightfully so, those are big numbers. But when you break it down and look at what our mill rate is and what that would do to our mill rate, it's not, I don't think it's. An as frightening number if you can look at it and say, well, I'm not approving a hundred million dollar anything because that's going to raise my taxes a crazy amount. But when you actually have the number in front of you, you're like, oh, that's going to raise my tax, my mill rate from five twenty to, you know, six dollars or, you know, six dollars and. You know, twenty-six cents or something if you borrowed the full capacity. It at least gives you an idea of like what you would be looking at. So at least you can say, okay, well, here's the, here's what it would look like. I think that's useful information.
That is a twenty year term, you know, and historically, this district has paid off debt faster. So we would probably be looking higher if we were to, you know, maintain that kind of structure and and moving forward. I don't think the community wants to be in debt for twenty years. For something like this. So I think the faster we can get it paid off, the better and people would be probably more on board with a ten year term like we've done in the past. On the last stuff, I think it was, you know, two thousand and twelve was the last levy and that was paid off already. So that's a ten year, that's a ten year turnaround to get it, get rid of it. And doesn't put a future generation into debt that they didn't even agree to. That's what I don't want, you know, I don't want to, I don't. I'm not a big fan of the twenty year term, I guess, especially with this and, you know, obviously, the numbers are big and I think, you know, I don't think the community is going to get behind with. Some of these big numbers. I think, you know, smaller numbers like, you know, individuals like Jackson School. And move on from there, you know, I think would be a better plan. But obviously, that's not, that's not the struck, that's not the plan here, not we're trying to to figure out, but. It's definitely. Twenty year term just seems a little bit long. I mean.
Well, and to John's point, I mean, it's, it's like when I bought my house, thirty years is really a lot. You know, that's a, that's a long time. But there are opportunities, like in the, generally speaking, like in the debt that we've already taken out to pay off sooner. So for instance, let's say interest rates go down. There are occasionally, I mean, I'm assuming, we haven't seen the bond issuance in front of us, so I guess I can't say exactly what the terms are. But to John's point, if we have opportunities to pay it down faster, there's some debt that's structured that you can't pay down faster. And there's some debt that's structured that you have opportunities to pay it down faster. Can you maybe generally talk about that a bit?
Absolutely. I mean, and and that is, we can, and we, just another point ahead of answering that. We also will fine tune as you see scope and you tell us, hey, this is the amount we want to look at and we want to phase it in. Show me fifteen years, show me seventeen years, show me twenty. I can give you all of that. I just had to pick something. So it's not, this isn't a finished discussion. But I go back to this thirty year chart and this shows that, you know, you, you, when you access it, you're going to borrow it and lock it in. So the rates are fixed. However, in municipal borrowing, you have an ability to refinance and repay quicker, which is what this district has been doing. So. Some of those slides earlier was indicating that you've already been good fiscal stewards of. The taxpayers' money, managing it, paying it down quicker. Those original loans were not fourteen and eleven. Those were paid down to that fast. So subsequent to the original borrowing. No, I think it was, I think we started it lower than twenty. I think it was like seventeen ish, but.
Well, it's a good point. I mean, I look at this analysis like if I were thinking about buying a home and I go to the bank. And I say, here's, here's the information. They might say, great, you qualify for a six hundred thousand dollar loan and I'm making up that number. I may not need a six hundred thousand dollar house, but at least we know what the capacity is. Now I can go out and kind of do some, do some shopping. And I think that's really what we're talking about here to say, that's great, but we really have to identify. How big of a house do we need or what kind of house do we need really? That's what we need to do that do first. But I appreciate this because it, we get a concept of from a capacity perspective. You know, what we, what we might be able to afford, but really, we've got to focus on what it is we actually need to fit in there.
Correct. Oh, so this goes to capacity. So I told you that eight hundred and twenty million earlier. This, the blue portion of this shows that even if you did the hundred million, it's, you're only using about eleven percent of the district's capacity. Which is not the justification to do it. It's just if you, a hundred million is going to sound like a lot to most individual residents in their home budgets, right? But for the wherewithal of the school district and in the communities that it serves, it's still only a portion of the total. The other way to put it, make it relative is that, again, I referenced the amount of square footage, which I think is over a million, one point two, one point two million square feet that you have to. Manage over time or to your point, John, make decisions about, do we need that square footage? Like, how do we, how do we maximize what the need is? And then it makes, you know, the financing discussions different, right? Because we're focused on what you've already gone through the process of identifying as the need. So. Which is actually what the last slide is, is determining the board process, right? So you, next week, two weeks from now, you'll hear more information and then. As I showed you that that pyramid of time on the, on the, one of those early slides. You'll then say, okay, what amount of scope, what is, what are we focused on? And then what portions of what we talked about tonight? Can be fit within the operational budget with the six million you've saved? Can you borrow for some portion of it within the revenue limit or how much of it needs to be out? Or how much of it needs to be outside of the, the revenue limit via a voter-approved borrowing?
Great. Questions from the board?
I just got a question, maybe in a half comment. Our last referendum, like you had in the earlier slide, was 47 million. If, I was trying to look for the numbers. I think it was 26 to 28 million to build a new Jackson, and the rest primarily was going into the high school. I'm just saying, I think you're laying the ground for what even I thought would, is coming to a presentation. It's not 26 to 28 million to build a new school in Jackson anymore. It's probably going to be 35, 40. We'll see in a couple of weeks. That's, has to be one option. It's just more expensive, I think. Right? Building costs have went up since 2019 by double digits for a couple of years. And now the interest rate we were looking at in 19, I think, was around two to three, if I'm remembering right.
It was probably three for, I'd have to think back what the length we were showing at the time, but, but it was probably in the threes at that point.
So at least we're getting ahead of some of this communication that, I mean, borrowing has continually went up and costs have continually went up. The good news is the mill rate is down significantly. And for most people, again, they've seen a reduction in their tax rate. So I just wish we would have, right? We reduce the mill rate by a dollar 10 to 20 this year almost. That would have, we could have kind of kept the mill rate the same if we would have been having the same conversation.
Yeah. No, and that's, that was, yeah, and I'm glad you made that point. Because, yeah, in, if school finance would have allowed it, we could have said, well, let's keep the mill rate the same. And let's stuff this into a savings account, which is John's idea, I think. I think, and the problem is, we can't.
Yeah.
We can't.
Statutes currently don't allow you to do that at the board level.
Yeah, it's a, it's a crazy thing, but it's absolutely true. So, all right. Thank you, Kurt. Other?
This comparison data is available to the public, right? Like these?
Yeah.
Okay. I think it's, I just think it's really helpful for, for perspective, the, the, not this presentation right here, but the other one. I just think that's really useful for people to take a look at. And, I mean, just again, for comparison, you, according to your numbers, even if, even if 100 million was borrowed, it still puts us at the second lowest mill rate in the state, which is, I, I just think that's a testament to fiscal responsibility thus far.
In the region, of the comparable districts in the state, yeah.
You know?
Is there a way to make sure the community gets this information? Because, I mean, I think years prior, we had failed referendums because, you know, the, the information, they don't feel like they were informed enough. And I don't want that to be the next scenario. If they want to make that decision in the future, that they should have all the information, and especially this. I mean, you know, who knows where it's going to be, what the number's going to be, what we're going to do. But I think everyone needs to get it. And I don't think everybody watches these.
Nope, that's okay. I'll, I'll do a little shameless plug in, in case people are. So any community member can sign up also for our newsletter. So all this is live and on the website. We'll do a plug, a post-board meeting recap. And then we also have a press release that will go out after this. And then certainly, there'll be space in our community engagement and those conversations where we're certainly talking about the financial piece when it comes to understanding and designing solutions and doing that. So, you know, to your point, kind of shouting it from every avenue that we have, so people have access to that. We'll also be building kind of a static piece for our website as we explore what are the long-term solutions for our facilities, kind of all these components so that people can do the same thing. So I agree with you on, on kind of not just making it accessible, but really promoting that the information is there.
Yeah, I think that community engagement plan, and I realize that that's part of, if I remember right, that long spreadsheet with all the, all the bits, all the important bits and pieces. Because to John's point, we can absolutely put this out on the website. Someone's going to have to go get it. How do we, in a responsible way, push this information to, you know, to, to the constituents as well? Other questions, comments? Appreciate your presentation and more to come. Thank you.
Yes. Have a good evening. Thank you for having me.
Coming. All right. We move then to 2024, 2025 Facilities Capital Projects. And Tim Harder is going to walk us through that. Mr. Harder, good evening.
Good evening, board. Give me two seconds while I switch everything over here.
Of course. While you're doing that, I'm just going to do a check. Juvenile, still, still on the line?
I am.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Good evening. So I actually appreciate Mr. Brewer being here this evening because it kind of feeds right into our conversation as we talk about Facilities Capital Project recommendations. And as we look at this, this is for the 24, 25 budget year. And as Mr. Brewer talked about, there are two different funding mechanisms we typically use in facilities, one being Fund 41, which is for those capital projects. And so that's what you'll see brought forth tonight. These are recommendations. Please know, this does not cover the entire list of projects that we have in our online system called Arcabus that we have as terms of our capital projects. So we are deferring maintenance or capital projects down the road as been done in past years. I also want to preference when Fendorff comes up and talks about their assessment, they're looking at an entire scope of everything. Where typically, our past practice in this district around capital projects looks at the envelope of the building, the site. And you'll see some of our projects broken down that way, our mechanical systems like HVAC, plumbing, those types of things, and safety and security. So to give you a rough idea of what we do in a year or what the Facilities Department looks like, in the 2023 calendar year, we received almost 1,900 requests for service. And so 80% of them are what we call preventative maintenance type tickets. And so most of those are done in-house or as many as we can. Preventative maintenance tickets go anywhere from safety and security, like making sure that all of our fire extinguishers are up to pressure. They've been checked, they've been audited and so forth, to preventative maintenance like belts, filters, and so forth on the HVAC system. So that is what you look at there. The 3,579 corrective maintenance tickets are requests made by any user in the school district for something to be fixed. Simple as a light bulb that's out in the room to a water fountain or a urinal that's leaking in a bathroom. And so that's what those different pieces look like, and you can see a rough idea there. The long-term standing target in the district has always been to be around that 80, 20 breakdown between preventative maintenance and corrective maintenance. And we're holding right at that category at that point in time. So just to give you a scope of the work that's done within our departments. So when you look at our capital projects, as I mentioned, we tried to break them down into some categories. And so when we look at our first recommended area is some roofing into part of the building envelope. So we know that a secure building, a building that has a good envelope, make sure that the materials, the structure of that building are taken care of. And so the typical biggest ticket item in past years on our capital improvement project list is always our roofs. And so this year, we are recommending a half of Section 1 at Green Tree. When you stand outside of Green Tree, it basically covers from where you walk into the office all the way down to the left side of the building. And so we are looking at doing half of that portion of the building. We are looking at doing a segment of the high school. And we are looking at doing a small portion of McLean that needs to have some work done related to some, some materials that just aren't standing as long as they should and make sure that we don't have any continued water leakage in that area. This does not include sections that have been deferred in multiple different places. When you refer back to the, the EUA study, as you look at all those different scores, we look at every single roof that is up for potential renewal in our capital project list. Let it be deferred in past years or up this year. And our team will do an assessment on what those issues are. These are the areas that have the highest needs currently to make sure that our roofs stay solid and aren't leaking at that point in time. So any questions on the roofing portion of it? All right. So the next ones are typical, the next two are typical things that you would see in a capital improvement plan. The first one being throughout the year, we have about $30,000 in roof repairs that are done. That is a year-long process, depending upon the type of the year, depending upon what happens and so forth. That is money that is allocated for those, hey, it happened. We walk in and the roof is leaking in this building. The second item that you'll see on there is masonry repairs and tuck pointing. And this year, we are targeting green tree and decor. If you remember back in the EUA assessment, they had some pieces in there about the north section of decor. So we are looking to take care of some of those pieces. And then green trees, tuck pointing and masonry work is actually tied in with their roofing. We have a longstanding project, process or problem of getting water away from that building. So with this, we're actually looking at doing the downspouts with the roof and coming through the masonry to extend that and keep that water away from the foundation of our building at that point in time. So we're going to tie those two projects together to helpfully save some money. The last area there that we have is the soffit repairs at Silverbrook. So when we remodeled Silverbrook, you know, 10 years ago, 11 years ago, portions of that building are still original. The roofs, you know, some of the soffit pieces and so forth. We have some soffits that are end of life. They are to the point where they are starting to basically corrode and fall apart. They are starting to let bits and pieces of water into the soffit, and we want to cut that off. So we have a secure envelope in that building. And so this will allow us to start that process of repairing that. Basically, it is a true rip out the soffit and replace it at that point in time. As we look at our site conditions, the next two items are things that are typically on our capital improvement project list as you go back and look at them. The first one is concrete maintenance and repair across the district. So for example, this last summer, we had some cracked concrete that at Badger that also had lifted on one side and sunk on the other side, things like that. This year, the city has also informed us that they are looking at redoing Summit Drive. And for those of you who aren't familiar with roads in town, I'm very thankful, as I dropped my children off there for years. I was happy when it snowed, filled in a few of the potholes. Summit Drive is to the south side of McLean. And with that project, they will actually be taking care of all of any sidewalk repairs that need to be made in that sidewalk, that is city sidewalk at that point in time. And so they will take care of all that in one chunk instead of us having to come in and hire a contractor to do that. So we are setting aside a portion of our repairs to take care of that this year. We typically do asphalt repairs throughout the summer. This is small area repair where you may drive into a parking lot and see a four-foot by four-foot area repaired. It's cracked ceilings, sometimes some touch-up lining and so forth of the paint, depending upon what we're doing, but that's throughout the district. And then the last item on our site is a continued project that the Facilities Department has worked on and was actually identified in some facility planning work done a few years ago around athletics and looking at our athletic complexes. We have an inequity between our softball field complex and our baseball field complex at the high school. And so this is a continued project with that. This would be actually fencing in the south, putting a permanent outfield fence in the south, softball diamond over there. It's the step two of what was done by Mr. Ross and the crew prior and our contractor of redoing the infield and regrading that work and moving around some different site pieces there.
Hey, Tim, question on that one. Does, does that include, or is there, maybe in a future phase, does it include restroom facilities permit ones?
Yep. So that will, not necessarily in this project, but that is part of that project that was an identified need. I also know that's something that was reviewed as part of EUA's assessment in terms of what that looks like. So something that we've talked internally, Ms. Wimmer, myself, the athletic teams, is really using that data and starting to build a plan for that, just like we would our buildings. And so we will look at that all-encompassing as we go forward.
I just, the, can you just explain to me how the inequities of the softball field has a greater need than the inequities of the handicap accessibilities in Jackson?
Yep. So certain things, Mr. Donovan said, certain things we can address. So in terms of cost and budget dollars-wise, the $55,000 is not going to address the level changes within the building at that point in time.
They probably put a ramp in, though.
Well, and we are, we have ramps in there. We have an accessible AD entry into the building at this point in time.
Not at the front door.
If you don't go in the front door, the only way to put a ramp in there where the front door is, is actually to do a back and forth ramp because you go down.
I'm just saying, are, are, you know, are we, it seems like we're putting, you know, things that are extracurricular outside of the standard, normal day use of our, of our district. And it just doesn't seem right to me. I mean, you know, Jackson is, is dying down there, and they've been asking for upgrades and updates, and we're just pushing them off for, for softball fence? It doesn't seem right to me.
So let me just give you the context. Nope, just like there's requirements around disability access, all of those pieces. There's Title IX requirements that were held accountable to equitable things such as, as the softball-baseball discrepancy. So that's been brought up. So again, that's a Title IX federal piece, too. That's why you see it on this list as well.
All right. Outside of the site, when we talk about security, this is something, this is an area when you see security that is often co-shared in budgets. So one of the things you'll hear me speak about is where we fund certain things. Sometimes we share them out of multiple budgets. So in this case, security, when you talk about our security system, so the board's probably used to seeing our security cameras, our intercom systems and so forth. We just went through the process of putting door lording in the district and so forth. That security process or that security budget is shared amongst technology and facilities. So both contribute to the end game of that security posture of what that looks like. And so you will see money tagged in both the facilities project list and also in the technology project list. This dollar amount here is basically an upgrade of the entire behind-the-scenes system. So we are due for a software upgrade at that point in time. And with that comes a renewal piece and the support for that. That is a multi-year support. So when you see that dollar amount, that is more than one year that we are buying that contracted software and use of that system for. It also hits on some additional cameras. So you saw that in the EUA study. And something that we have been working for, towards here is, is adding additional cameras to our elementary school buildings while being effective and efficient with our dollars and our equipment at our larger buildings. In the world of technology, we are at a tipping point where I can go into the high school and replace three cameras with one, get better coverage, get better quality cameras, and I only have to use one license. So much of this work will actually be done in-house where we will be using existing licenses and wiring and so forth and just paying for the purchase of the cameras at that point in time. And so with that goal between the two budgets of getting that equitable and making sure we have quality coverage in our elementary buildings at that point in time. And then we are due for a panic button upgrade. So we have some older hardware. Ironically, lately, it seems to have hit a few different times. And so there's nothing, when that alert goes off, Jen and I, typically, if we're with each other, we look at each other, but that's a pretty fast reaction time. So we're in need of some hardware upgrade so we can actually reduce the number of accidental hits and/or alerts that we have across the system. So you'll see this referenced again in our technology budget also to expand and get where we want to go. The next category, and this will line up a lot with what you saw in the EUA pieces, is interior finishes. And so this is something that Mr. Ross and his team had started the process on prior to me taking over the Facilities Department, is, is building in that interior piece. And that's where you'll see more of that in the Fendorff numbers and that review that you get. First of all, they started adding that whole concept of doing regular painting throughout the district. As Mr. Brewer talked about, there are capital projects, and then there are things that typically happen out of our fund operation, our fund-attend operation budgets. This painting does not stop the daily touch-ups that we do here with our team, the smaller projects that we do in the district. These are typically high-traffic, high-use areas where we have extensive peeling of paint and so forth, where we need to bring somebody else in to prep that, and we don't have enough staff to do that internally. So we have an assessment that we go through and a plan that starts us to target all of those pieces, and we go around and take care of that. You will also commonly see our staff painting in the buildings over summer, doing smaller classrooms in a variety of different other areas. These are those bigger spaces. The last biggest space we just did was Jackson Elementary as part of last year's capital painting project. At their elementary school, their cafeteria is a shared gym space. They actually had peeling paint on the walls and a variety of other issues. So that contractor was actually able to get in over Christmas break and take care of that for us. We have a regular need to do some flooring replacement within the district. And so $50,000 is not near to cover that. However, we need to take care of some spaces where we have trip hazards and other safety issues within the district. Often, this is replacing carpeting that is original to the building. So for example, at the high school, you know, we have numerous rooms where the carpeting is being held together by a flooring tape. We want to start, we get rid of that and reduce our trip hazards or issues we've had in the classroom and look to change those out. The last area is an area that has popped up over the last couple of years is our auditorium stage floor. That facility gets a ton of use year-round, both internally and externally. And in prior years, we were lucky through a partnership with Westbound Mutual and some other donations in the district to be able to remodel that space. The one thing, or one thing that did not get taken care of was the auditorium stage floor. It is beyond its useful life. It actually read, original to that auditorium build. It's a softer wood. It's to the point where it's starting to dry rot in spots and become a safety hazard. And so we need to rip that entire, that floor out and then bring that up to today's standard at that point in time. And so that's something we just don't have the capability of doing in-house with our staff. So we would contract out at that point in time. The last category that we would have would be our mechanicals and systems. So the first one that you will see up there is the high school HVAC. This is a continued project from last year where we are working to balance and control the pressures in that building. It not only serves the purpose of being effective and efficient with our HVAC systems here, making sure that they're running to their fullest operational capacities, making sure that we are running them to the best while not expending extra dollars. It also has a safety and security piece to it. When you have high pressures in our buildings, I know we've talked about this at the board, where the doors don't shut behind them and so forth. We have made great gains on this already. We have some additional work to do that, including updating some of the frequency drives which control our equipment and so forth. And so we would continue that project into this next budget year. Our building automated system, which runs our HVAC over at McLean, the software is at end of life, and it's a security risk to the point where we no longer even run it on our network here. And so it is to that point of an end-of-life security. We will update some control equipment. However, we will be able to utilize the majority of the equipment that is already in that building, use the new software and programming to be able to control that for some additional energy savings and operational savings at that point in time. The last area is something that is continuing from our fund-ten budget. And so we often get this, you know, where is the district at with changing to LED lights? And so this is something that Mr. Ross and the facilities team started out of their fund-ten budget in prior years where we retrofit a fixture. It doesn't mean I rip the whole fixture out and put a brand new in. It means we're getting new bulbs with a little bit of additional wiring and some different pieces and a smaller transformer, and we retrofit that fixture to turn it over to LED. So for the past year, we have completed majority of the high school hallways already. So those are moved over to LED. Over the Thanksgiving break and shortly after, of course, it had to turn cold, we finished the parking lot lights at the high school campus and at Badger and converted those over to LED. We are proposing through our budget to do a internal retrofit. And what that means is we will do as much of this in-house with our district staff. And so in prior years, some of these things would have been contracted out. We have been lucky enough that we are at, knock on wood, full capacity in our maintenance department. We also, through a reorganization, our department shifted additional managerial time and hours to a maintenance position so that we could increase boots on the grounds to get work done. And we would actually be looking at doing work at Silverbrook, Badger, and McLean and retrofitting all of those fixtures at a reduced cost. So I don't have to pay the cost of the fixtures. I don't have to wait three, four months to get them. And we would do it in-house with our labor. And then we apply for focus on energy rebates that go with it at the same time that we can use to offset that. So by doing that in-house with our own staff here, using those focus on energy rebates, we could actually take care of Silverbrook, Badger, and McLean all at the same time throughout the school year at that point. So as I talked about, you have the concept of, you know, these are our projects. This is purely the Fund 41 piece that's related to our capital improvement projects. Later this spring, you will see me come back and present about Fund 10, which is our operational piece. There are many smaller maintenance pieces that get taken care of out of that Fund 10 budget. So for example, we have some, an issue at Decor that we're addressing right now of our Fund 10 budget. It doesn't hit that threshold of $5,000 as a capital project, but we're taking care of those things regularly. And so we want to present that also to see where those other additional maintenance dollars are going to help support our district and keep our buildings operated at that time. Any questions on projects?
Superintendent Wimmer, just from a procedural perspective, this is a discussion item. So is this an inform because it's within the budget? Or is this something that will come back for approval?
So it's just that one slice of the larger budget. So again, he's referencing it's just the 1.8 that Brian talked about, that Tim talked about. We would want approval on this as well as the technology. You see these every December and January. So again, you're still going to have authority and approval around the larger, all of that. We just want these slices so we can get moving on getting bids, scheduling work, all of those kinds of things. So the, this item, as well as the following on technology, we'd ask for future action at a board meeting. But again, you're still going to have larger context, more kind of slices of the pie, so to speak, around the budget.
Great.
So yeah, and you'll see that entire Fund 10 budget that comes for maintenance. You'll see facilities. The difference here is is technology doesn't have a Fund 41 for capital improvements. So that's why we reference it purely out of that fund at that point.
Sure. So we'll see this item again. But are there any questions in the meantime? All right, hearing none, we can proceed to the technology, 2024, 2025 technology projects.
All right, so similar to our facilities projects, we bring our recommended project at this point in time. And again, we're looking at this for next year. You know, facilities is really driven about lining up contractors and equipment and so forth. We often try to do many of those projects during the summer months, but we are getting better at doing them year-round as we go forward. Technology is not so much about lining up contractors as it's much gaining access to materials so we get them. We just finished procuring, if remember, the last two budget years, we have been through a replacement process to replace all of our network switches. They finally just showed up a month ago. So some of those have been on order for two months. So, or excuse me, for two years, we're happy to get them here. So by bringing this forward now, we're asking for the expenditure of just these projects, not the rest of the operational budget that goes with technology. And I'll talk about that a little bit more later on. So when you look at what we support, always like to share to not just the board, but our community, what we do in-house. These are all things that we do in-house with our staff here. We do not contract any of these services out here. So we had a little over 3,000 requests for service. We see approximately 9,600 unique wireless devices every single day on our system here. We move about 2.4 or 5 terabytes of data on a day. And you can see the variety of different pieces that we set up here and we work on in the district. And so some of the things that we have completed, I'm not going to go through each of those individually today, but gives you the scope of what we support across the district. And so for example, we're at 300 plus security cameras. I can envision a day where we will hit 400 as we look at coverage, even as reducing other areas, the needs in some of our other spaces and so forth at that point in time. So as we look through with our technology plan and our, in our operational replacement cycle that happens with technology, it is driven often by end-of-life of support and hardware. And that target, we are finding out, continues to change with our vendors as they try to keep up with the world of cybersecurity and so forth in terms of what that looks like. So when we talk about our network and our infrastructure and our security, the first item that we have in our budget this year is replacement of all of our uninterrupted power supplies. So that is our battery backups for every single building. Some of our buildings do have generators. So we reduce the length of how long we have to run those batteries or how long they need to run for. Others will, we ask them to run longer to make sure that we can keep our operational systems going that are important in a safety and security event. Phones, the ability to use PAs, things like that. That is an item that is E-Rate eligible. And so as a reminder to the board or for our new members of the board, E-Rate is a federal program that we can apply for around specific items. There's two categories. Category one is for our internet service. Category two is for hardware. In this case, our power supplies actually fit in the category of what is fundable. We present a project. It goes through an approval project with the federal government and their organization. And then they determine based upon the project within the scope of the rule what they will fund. And it's typically for us 50% of the project. So if they fund 50% of this project, we will get $75,000 back that we can invest into our, our technology department at that point in time. And so we will file for E-Rate on this project. We actually just talked to our E-Rate person today about this and what this looks like. The second item that you see on the list, and this is where I was talking about the shared pieces around safety and security. Because we are adding cameras, because we are moving to higher definition video, we need additional storage capacity for our security cameras. And so we are looking to add a server to store our security cameras here. At minimum, we will hold 60 days of video footage here in case we have to go back and look. Without adding, we will actually get to a point where we wouldn't be able to sustain 60 days for some of our buildings at that point in time. We also have some server replacements for our backup systems. For those of you that do not know, our backup systems sit at Jackson Elementary. So we try to segment them out from the rest of the district as much as possible in the case that we need to, but we do have a few servers there that are up for replacement. We also, years ago, 10 years ago, 11 years ago, when I came to the department, we were halfway through virtualizing our server environment. And what that means, instead of having a physical box for every server that we have, we have over 100 of them. We buy larger servers, a big storage box and Nsys for the data, and we virtualize all of that software into a server farm. And so we are at the point where we need to upgrade and purchase a new support cycle for our software that runs our server farm at that point in time. And so that's what that $60,000 is. It is a three-year support process. So that covers our support, our security upgrades, all of that 24/7/365 for three years. As I mentioned about security cameras, we also have security cameras not just in the hallways or in gyms. We have them in high-neat areas or high-importance areas around our facilities areas, some of our physical plants, like our HVAC plants, but also our technology infrastructure. We are up to the point where we are end-of-life on the hardware and the software for those pieces. So we would replace those and condense those down with our current security system that we have here also. And then last but not least, you will see an additional $25,000 to match that $60,000 around safety and security that comes out of upgrading the system in the facilities capital budget to add the additional cameras that we need and the programming so that we can make sure that we have equitable and good access in all of our school buildings, not just our larger buildings at that point in time.
Superintendent Hutter, with regard to the network equipment, so the servers. The question that I have is, you hear a lot about, oh, well, you can just put that in the cloud because then you wouldn't need to buy a server. That would seem to make sense. Now, the cloud's not free, but it also comes with some disadvantages, I would imagine. Can you just talk generally about?
Absolutely, I can.
I would imagine, I would imagine you thought about that and dismissed that.
We have, and actually, we just looked at that. So we look at that every once in a while. So our biggest, when you ask what's our biggest usage thing in-house, it's our Skyward Student Information and Financial System. And so because we have that in-house, we support that 24/7/365. We could certainly contract that with Skyward and look at those costs. At this point in time, is actually cost beneficial for us to keep it in-house and allow us to provide the controls and say when our systems are up and down. When you contract that out with them, they determine when your system goes down for updates. Sometimes that's not the most opportune time, like the day before grades are due. That happened to a friend of mine in another district. So we looked at the cost benefit piece plus the customer service piece. It also gives us the peace of mind of all of our backups are taken here. We do our integrations into those systems and so forth. So we do look at that regularly to keep the same level of service that we have just as not cost beneficial at this point in time. However, what we have done is we condense more and more items into that virtual server farm and as some of our newer systems, used to buy curriculum and actually was on its own server here. So when I started teaching, when we brought Project Lead the Way on, we had Project Lead the Way servers and all this kind of stuff. Now it's a small licensed server for the software. As that becomes in the cloud and is provided by the provider, we're actually able to reduce that $60,000 cost around server virtualization down because we don't have to buy as many virtual server licenses at that point in time.
Thank you.
You bet. In the second area, and this is an area that, you know, that most people, when they think of IT, this is what they recognize the most. This is the devices that our staff use every single day and our students in the district. So we are at a little bit of a peak year where we have a few extra staff devices. So we balance end-user devices with our network equipment. And so you notice what's not on the network this year is a new wireless system, a new firewall, 100 new network switches, those types of things. This is our year to do more end-user device items and peripheral-type devices. So we have approximately 140 devices. When we talk about the dollars, this is not just the device itself. So this comes with all the Windows licensing. It comes with extended warranty and so forth. So when you go, oh, well, why is it so much more? That all comes in as the package deal. It also comes with the delivery of it. It comes with some of that set up prior to coming to us that we can have done. We also are at the point where we do carry some Windows student devices in our libraries and then also typically in our career and technical education areas at Badger Middle School and the high schools. So as you know, we are a one-to-one district, and we'll talk about that in the next one. We still need to provide some of those higher-end computing devices for those areas in terms of what that looks like. And so we do need to do some replacement in a few areas there. We have been able to reduce that number over the years by planning and really working well with our CTE departments and scheduling the classrooms. So in some cases, we're actually reducing the number of rooms that we need the Windows devices in. And instead of having devices in every room, we're shifting the schedule so that the teacher in the class goes to the appropriate room with the resources in it. The one area that we always see every year is our one-to-one program. So this is the replacement for our kindergarten, fifth, and ninth grade. It's our loner pool parts. And then our aid staff, a percentage of them also receive a Chromebook so they can do their day-to-day work where our staff receive a laptop. The cost that you see up there is for approximately 1,200 devices. Unfortunately, we are informed that devices are going up. Imagine that, by inflation. And we're starting to see some slowdowns in the ability to get items. Again, which is unique, that showed up in the last month. But the cost, when you look at that, is not just the device itself. It includes the case that we require that's mandatory for every student here. And so that's something that we really do value. And we test those cases out. If you ever want to come in on a day when we test them, we actually drop them off the balcony up here and see which case does well. We also carry an extended warranty on them. They come asset-tagged, they come set up, they come bulk shipped, which bulk ship means they're out of the box with no foam, with no plastic, and all I do is take the Chromebook out. You may not think that's a big deal, but it's amazing how fast you can fill up a dumpster when you have 1,200 new Chromebooks come in with, with that and the time that that takes. The other thing that we have done in the past and that we will continue to do is is that we bulk sell those old devices. So actually, if you would have came through a month ago, we had three pallets of devices that go out. We take that money and we invest that back into our one-to-one program to keep that cost down. The other thing is, is our entire technology team that does break-fix of our devices now is certified by HP to take care of all of those repairs on those devices. When we repair it, we actually get paid a stipend per repair. That money comes into a revenue account. We've worked with Mr. Sarno. That goes right back into funding our one-to-one program to be able to shift our cost into other areas of our tech budget at that point in time. And so that's something, as we continue that process and we bring more and more devices, this is our third year of that. We are seeing that gain back and we're able to put that money back into the district. And so that's something that each one of our computer technicians and our youth apprenticeship student has to go through that training for, and that money comes back. We are on a heavy year for copier replacement cycles, last year and this year. So we shifted seven years ago to purchasing our copiers instead of leasing them here. What that has allowed us to do is to run our devices longer than get into a five-year change-out-everything type of process. And so we have pushed some of our devices to their breaking point. Some of them are nine years old. That's a long time to run a copier in an elementary school building or a high school or a middle school. And so we will be replacing some of those. And then we have our regular process of trying to upgrade as many classrooms as possible to a new classroom display, which is often an interactive TV, 95% of the time. Sometimes, depending upon the size of the classroom or the use of the classroom, it's just a standard TV like you would see on the wall. That cost up there is not just for the display itself. That is the networking, the electrical and everything else that needs to be done to bring that into play.
That's not going to just be wires taped across the floor, right?
No, that gets fished on the wall. Yeah, we stopped that years ago. Yeah, yeah. If we find those, we want to address those. Yeah, that, those are things that drive me crazy and many others here, so. And we're lucky enough to that point in grade year, sometimes that's done in-house. So at a number of 20, we'll actually do that with our maintenance team, our electrician. We have a gentleman in-house who's certified to do low-voltage wiring, all of that. When we did McLean this last year, we did pretty much the whole building. That, we need to bring a contractor in because they have old plaster walls and so forth to do some of those pieces, but we believe we can do this in-house, which saves us money in the long run at that point in time also. As Ms. Wimmer and I talked about, this is only a portion of the overall technology budget. And so that whole piece will come back for approval later on and communication and explanation of what that looks like. The rest of that budget includes everything from just pieces to fix things to paying for Skyward and Canvas and softwares that we use and a variety of different other things. But that will be brought back for the board to review as we get further on in Mr. Sarno's budgeting process this year. So any questions on any of those projects this evening?
Any questions? So as we talked about previously, we'll see this as an action item coming up?
You will be.
Right.
If there are any questions on either between now and the next board meeting, please reach out. We'd be glad to sit down, talk with you, take a phone call, whatever it is.
Great. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, we move then to enrollment projections for open enrollment seats. And Superintendent Wimmer is going to lead us through that.
This is an annual requirement of every board to openly declare and then take action on open enrollment seats that will be available. So you do that prior to that window opening. So there's a calculation. It's actually across multiple departments. Mr. Sarno works on the kind of enrollment side. You have Emily Melstrand, who looks at the caseload pieces for special education because we declare those separately. And then Lenny from an HR and overall staffing. So first, we start with kind of projections, then we'll do the seats in that piece. So we work backwards from, you can see those highlighted pieces. Those are kind of the, the pieces from the appeal process from the state that you need to be in attention to. What's your projection? What's class size? And again, we do that very conservatively. And then per their instructions, you take about 85% of that. So you're setting that availability even lower because you have to have room to honor people who are moving to your community and expect to have a seat to enroll into. So you can see that 85%. So we're forecasting in grades one through 12, a total of 13 seats. You can see where those are in the gray box. I just showed you for reference what last year's seats were at, just so you have that. So you can see very similar. One of the pieces, again, open enrollment, we look at the caseload separately. There is no room this year. Last year, there was some limited seating. There is no room forecasted going into the next year. And then we would again be comfortable with recommending that the board adopt unlimited seats for K4 and K5, starting out students and families with the district should they want to attend from another resident district, welcoming them in those early years so they can start and end their career with us. Any questions?
It would help if I turned on my microphone. So this too will come back for action?
Yep, you'll take formal action, then we post it on our website. It has to be specific in our minutes, exactly how many seats, where, et cetera, just for the public. And then we'll also forecast for families who might be visiting our enrollment page, hey, if you're a non-resident and would like to become part of our district, what is that process? Again, that opens a little bit later, February through June, that we're looking at those pieces. And again, just for reference, you're identifying the seats at a grade level. So at elementary, they can, they can come in and they can ask for, I want a seat at McLean. I heard about the new sidewalks I'm in. So they can ask, but it's dependent on where those seats are available. So then we'll go to the classroom level and determine is or isn't one of these seats available at that school? And we might accept them into the district, but not necessarily that school. So we still have control around our class size at all of those levels.
What percent of the open seats were filled last year? Do you know?
I think every single one of those seats. And then, go ahead.
Do you have an idea of how many were turned away?
I can get you the statistics on that. I can bring them, I can share them with the board in an update and then reference them at our next meeting. Because in certain areas, yep, you're right, they might apply and I don't have a seat to give. And then there's certain additional windows, that kind of thing. So we'll look at, in our policy around open enrollment, we'll create, there's preference if you have already attended, if you've got siblings already attending, that kind of, if you've moved and you're on a tuition waiver, there's some preference pieces if you are already our student. But then also, we'll create a waitlist and then we'll pull from those too. So even if there isn't a seat available at that time, we can pull from those pieces. But I can get you some statistics.
Thank you. Other questions? All right, hearing none. We'll see this back for action then on the next agenda. And that takes us then to the information section on our agenda. Annual parental notice of district educational options. And we invite forward Dr. Quinn Trueblood, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction. And good evening and welcome, Dr. Trueblood.
Good evening, everyone. I will make this very quick because it is an annual notice. And this notice does really cover four important state statutes, and I'm just going to list them. I'm sure you've done the pre-read, but it is specifically, the statutes refer to student performance reports, which the board really was informed of in detail at last month's meeting. Also, parents and notifying them of what programs are available in the district. Also, notice of the educational options that are available, along with the accountability report, performance categories, and pupil assessments. Lastly, it also covers the parent choice program, parental choice program. So I will just say, as you've seen the document here, the totality of the programs in the district really covers all resident districts, what is available to them as full-time students, as part-time students, and as students who either choice out of the district into other programs and other districts, or our students who, other students who come from other districts and choice into our programs, including private schools and also including virtual programs and also homebound programs. All those categories of educational options for students in the district are listed in this program of education in the district. So if you have any questions about that, I'm happy to take many of them.
So this is a notice that we would have seen very similar to last year, et cetera, right? Okay. And this isn't something, this is information that doesn't require board approval, but more so that the board is aware that this will be published as a Class 1 notice on the website, if I remember right, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
And Superintendent Wimmer will refer to this in her report, but I'm actually very glad to just refer to it twice because it is an important point about how EL students or English language, English learning students are going to be assessed and the equity around that. So I'll let Superintendent Wimmer detail that a little bit more, but it is actually a very positive movement. So that concludes my information for you.
Right. Any questions? All right, we appreciate receipt of the information item, which then does take us to reports. And our first report is our Curriculum Committee Report, and Melanie Ergot is our committee chair, and will walk us through that.
All right, so the Curriculum Committee met on December 19th. We reviewed the survey results and recommendations on the process for vetting books for the book clubs. The purpose of the survey was to seek employee feedback, identify areas for improvement, and support adjustments in the process. There were 18 staff members and 692 parents and guardians were involved in the process in the first quarter. Well, the summary included a lot of information. I'll share that 84% of permission slips were returned to teachers, and of the slips returned, 8% or 47 parents or guardians noted they did not want their student to select specific books. Regarding recommendations, they centered on engaging teachers in the development of the process, which was not possible in September of this last year, just due to the, having to rush it through before the school year started, and to revise definitions and develop additional guidance for graphic violence, sexual content, and excessive obscene language using example books. So they're just kind of looking for some more clarity on what fits in those categories. And then a complete summary of the results is available on the district website, and parents and additional staff will be surveyed by the third week of January to complete the survey collection. We also reviewed books in the dystopian genre. This genre proved to be a challenge to the graphic violence criteria. Dr. Trueblood and her team prepared an FAQ on the genre and indicated that several of the books in the series did exceed the threshold for graphic violence. For the books that exceeded the threshold, rationales from teachers on the educational value and interest levels of students were provided for the committee's consideration. We did approve all of the books based on the fact that there were other options that did not have an exceeds notation, and we were being very transparent to parents and guardians by disclosing all the information in there. Parents were notified, and the choice can be left to the families if the parents felt that those books were appropriate for their family. And most importantly, we just really appreciated, I feel like getting the context and hearing the why behind a lot of the book choices. That really helped us to, you know, kind of understand why the teachers were suggesting them. So that concludes our report.
Great. Thank you.
Got this question.
Go ahead.
The 8% of the ones that you said, you said there's 8% that parents had indicated, did that include the default position? Because I remember at one of the work sessions, we talked about a default position.
No, that did not, well, that's correct, right? So 8% just noted on there that they did not want their student to select books.
So that was actively noted?
Those were actively noted, and then 84% of the slips were returned. So there was a percentage that did not indicate, but then those kids would have been...
The default.
The default, yeah, where they would have not been able to choose certain books.
Thank you.
So I actually wondered, like, you know, maybe some parents may have done that intentionally, like, oh, well, I know that you're not going to get to choose these ones, so we just won't turn it in. So it's a possibility.
Well, thank you. Obviously, the Curriculum Committee's put in a lot of work around this process and building it out, and appreciate it very much. Thank you. Any other questions for Melanie? All right, we'll move to the Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Wimmer.
So we'll lead with, just a reminder to families that due to predicted snow and poor road conditions that really impact safety of travel more afternoon and later in the afternoon, that is why we are closing alongside everyone else in our county, neighboring counties. So just a reminder about that. As referenced by Dr. Trueblood, there is a new WASBE resolution for consideration. June Kruger is our representative for the WASBE Delegate Assembly, and it may be heard there. So they released this late, Milwaukee is its own kind of region, so it has a different process. It can submit a late resolution, and that's why it didn't come forward with the others. So we received it just right at the start of winter break. And it's Milwaukee Public Schools has adopted a proposed resolution for consideration. They are seeking, and again, the entirety is linked there in Board Docs for everyone, but they're seeking that WASBE support early literacy assessments, screeners, and diagnostics that are now required in state law, with the Act 20, you recall, be provided in an English learner, EL students' home language in accordance with current best practice in assessment and instruction for bilingual program students. So further, that EL students tested in English should not be labeled at risk without verification that the student also fails an early literacy test in their home language. Again, that would be best practice. It, it means they struggle with the language, not necessarily default that they're struggling with the reading. So again, that would be heard, just an opportunity if there's any comments from board members for our delegate to the assembly. And falls in line with current preferred practice, too. And then just foreshadowing, Board President and I, in efforts, we, we knew that we would want to spend a lot of time at the board tonight, really digging into the financial presentation, and we like to try and shorten our meetings. We, we did move some upcoming action regarding out-of-state travel. We'll ask that you review those items. Let me know if there's any questions, but the team will be prepared to answer those in the interim or at our next meeting where we seek action. So one is a high school Spanish department seeking board approval for an out-of-country class trip to Paris, Madrid, Barcelona in the summer of 2025. Trip dates would be July 6, 2025 through July 16. And again, that information is provided. Advisors are Brenda Henchel and Dawn Epps. So I would ask you to review. If you've got any questions, let us know in advance so that you feel that you're prepared to take action that evening. The same with the West Bend Winter Guard, they're seeking approval to participate in competitions in Illinois for three teams with a date range from February 3rd to April 7th. Again, it's a familiar request to you. You've seen the Winter Guard team before. They continue to advance for out-of-state competitions in the past as well. Their advisor is Kathy Nino. So again, I ask you to take a look so that you feel prepared when we ask you to act at the next meeting on those.
Superintendent Wimmer, would it make sense that if you don't receive questions in the meantime, can we place those on the consent agenda for approval next time?
Yeah, if the board is fine with those. Again, it's an out-of-country trip for Spanish. It's been a few years since they've had one, but it's very consistent with all of our others. And again, the Winter Guard, you've seen a very similar request with different dates prior. So happy to do that. If in the interim, the board would like something different, just reach out to myself or Board President, Mr. Swigert, and we can either accommodate a little further look, otherwise be prepared to take action.
And if there was a last minute question, we can always pull it off the consent agenda, but...
Absolutely.
We'll coordinate when we set the next agenda then?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The mental health seminars that have been in place, the next one will be Wednesday, January 10th, 5:00 p.m. That title is Understanding the Impact of Mental Illness on School Performance. So again, those seminars include panelists who share information on support systems, resources available within schools and community to help make the school experience more positive for students with mental health challenges. So go to our website to register for those. And then everyone could use a little help for the cost of college. So our West Bend High Schools will host the College Goal Wisconsin event on the new free application for federal student aid, or commonly called the FAFSA form, and that will be held January 16th, 6:00 p.m. in the West Cafeteria. So again, if you're looking for that, there's also assistance through local scholarships, and those local scholarships, that application is due February 15th. And again, you can get a little more information in our Career Readiness Center at the high school for that. And then speaking of information meetings, on January 17th, 4K will host a virtual information meeting. Again, that will be held so that you can have detailed information about our program and its community-based partners in West Bend, Newburgh, Jackson. So take a look for those links. If you have any trouble registering for that, let us know. And I wanted to extend a thank you to the Hometown Foundation for making a $1,200 donation to the West Bend Public Schools Foundation that will be designated for our music department. Those funds were raised this past summer during their Regner Rocks Concert Series and again are dedicated for our music department. So just a thank you to them for their fundraising efforts. That was my last item.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Wimmer? All right, we appreciate your report. We move then to action items. I'm just going to pause for a moment just to verify. June, are you still able to hear us?
I am.
Fantastic, all right. Our first action item is audited financials for 2022, 2023, effective June 30th, 2023, and fund balance designation. So this is a presentation that we had received last time from Brian Grunwald, our outside auditor. Are there any questions that the board had regarding the presentation? Otherwise, it would be up for action. Any questions? Hearing none, I would move to approve the audited financials for 2022, 2023, effective June 30th, 2023, and fund balance designation as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melanie. Motion and second to approve the financials and the fund balance designation. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Ms. Ergot?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Ms. Kruger?
Yes.
And Mr. Swigert votes yes. Dr. Temez?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
And Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That motion carries. We move to our next action item then, which is district budget calendar for 2024 and 2025. Superintendent Wimmer, are there any changes? I know, I note that there were some formatting changes and some additional enrollment dates have been added, but otherwise the substance remains the same, correct?
Correct.
Very good. Any questions on the budget calendar? Hearing none, I would move to approve the district's 2024, 2025 budget calendar as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chad. Motion and second to approve the budget calendar. Any final discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Dr. Temez?
Yes.
Ms. Kruger?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Ms. Ergot?
Yes.
And Mr. Swigert votes yes. Ms. Lang?
Yes.
And Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Right, that concludes our action items. We move then to future agenda items and our board meeting calendar. So I'll read these off in chronological order. All of these meetings are currently scheduled to take place at the Education Service Center. On January 16, our Curriculum Committee meeting at 4:30 p.m. A regular board meeting on January 22 at 5:30 p.m. and February 5 at 5:30 p.m. Our Policy Committee next meets at 4:00 p.m. on February 13th, and then February 19th, regular board meeting, 5:30 p.m. And we encourage the public to check for the official meeting postings as the time and location might change, but that's the meeting calendar as we have it prepared at and location might change, but that's the meeting calendar as we have it prepared at this moment. Any questions on the meeting calendar?